What are they? Are we good?
Yes.
Nice, we have a few administrative items here. First, we have approval of the minutes from February twenty fifth, twenty twenty five. Motion and second and a vote. Move to approve and go, a second?
Second.
Second. All in favor? Close, stay, motions carried, about four decisions. Two parcels, first, twenty seven cross LLC. First decision is approval of side yard setback variance. I'm gonna have to be, a motion and a second. By Joe? By Josh? All in favor?
Aye.
Close, stay, motions carried. Second, also twenty seven crossroad is a total side yard setback. Variance of six point six feet. Joe?
Second.
By Josh? Josh, second?
Sixty.
Yeah, what a more, little horse. Thought you were in nineteen. Josh, all in favor?
Aye.
Close, stay, motions carried. Second decisions are from VIP Parkway, first is a leave of front yard setback fifteen feet.
Just doing the dumpster?
This is, the dumpster's next, but same parcel. It's a variance fifteen feet. The thirty five foot front yard setback. Okay, by Joe?
Second, second, second.
By Josh?
Let's keep it going.
By Josh, only one more after this, guys, these, which match? All in favor? Close, stay, motions carried. Oh, yes. But not least, approval of a dumpster in that front yard for sixty seven, I think, if you have to parkway. Okay, by Joe? By Josh? All in favor, buddy? Close, stay, motions carried. We've got about five minutes of uncomfortable silence here and then we'll start at six forty for, for all Franklin Park. We had an application table from last month, they're no longer here this month, so I saved the six thirty five slot for that.
Okay. While we're waiting, is there any here who's gonna make comments on the, on Franklin Park Garage, or even in the, in the leads?
Yes, I believe there are.
Yes.
Okay. You know, it's on, it's on, uh, planning, supposedly?
Last week.
There we go. Go on, go on. That's good.
We got three in the board?
That's good.
The names, uh, out of about twenty, maybe six, like, friends? You didn't take your four hours of time off?
What is that? Two eight, right?
I registered.
You can register.
No, not to that, I did something else, because it was a phone call, filed first. Probably.
Webinar?
Two. No, 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 it was two months ago, I think you signed it. In, in twenty twenty five.
If you do anything with trade, you just sign it to us.
Okay. There was two of them, I think.
Was it one of them?
Okay.
I'll leave that, we must be done. Um.
We keep on signing.
Survey? This one or this one?
Their new questions.
This one, right? These, these three are existing.
They're the same, most of it's.
Same story.
Very similar.
Same, same, just here in properties, you have, in the middle there?
Lot line goes into the middle.
Right here, so you want zero lot line, landscaping?
Oh.
That's not here?
It's right in between them, where it's looking.
Right here?
Is it actual?
Yeah.
Okay.
So much fun.
This is landscaping here, correct?
Not really.
Well, it's just, yes, the, the lot line, it's just not the lot.
Yeah, this is, yeah, this is the, the site plan from back then to the third.
Thompson Road.
Part of a lot.
Because I'm twelve.
Yes.
That's a lot, right?
Eight twelve, right?
Oh, yeah, no, no, I know.
Maybe some.
Oh, um. People go, right, see, for, for the point of the time.
Which part's that? Survey?
That, you know, it's probably from bad. Yeah, so, it's not, it's not, sorry. Just see, the dash, the heavy dash line, that's a lot.
So you have the buffers.
Oh, yes.
What's the purpose of the, of the buffer?
Well, the buffer zone, this space is only right here. It's between the two lots. Start to. That's not.
How much you're, how much you're, buffers, how much you're locked between the, the parking lot?
Yeah, see, I, you're, Google now.
A lot of, of, we're maintaining the, that you can.
Should mine be? Yeah.
You can hear all the developments occurring. Elbow, just trying to want to. It's not a franchise, it's, it's, it works that way.
Should have said, yes. You know, big on the, of the, yes.
Wow.
If we, if all, it's gonna be.
I think it just, yeah, it's like they're.
I'm trying to.
I know, it's, um.
In, in while the searches, you know, if you're gonna look through the, you're gonna like this, you, it's gonna be pretty serious.
I gotta find out myself, what is he, what he says, what the plan says, what the planning board says.
It's all, it's all.
Is it a new? Two new buildings.
Six forty, Mr. Chairman?
It is.
Yes.
Okay. Let's get started. First cases, eight twelve Franklin Drive, Steve Oliva Junior and Oliva Management LLC. I believe there are some interested residents in Franklin Park. Um, so I'm gonna read the notice. Uh, notices hereby given pursuant to section two sixty seven A of the New York State Town Law. That a public hearing will be held by the zoning board of appeals of the town of Duett, New York, at its offices sixty four hundred, fifty four hundred, Bitterman Drive, East Syracuse, New York. On Monday, March seventeenth, at six forty P M. To consider the application of Steed Oliva Junior and Oliva Management LLC received by the Duett Town Park on January twenty ninth, two thousand twenty five. Starting the premises situated eight twelve Franklin Park Drive, taxman parcel ID zero three nine zero nine zero one one. Owned by Oliva Management LLC and a residential two zoning district. Specific relief requested by the applicant is an area variance of ten feet or a landscape buffer of zero feet. What town code, section one ninety two dash one hundred requires a landscape buffer of at least ten feet. And for such additional relief as may be necessary appropriate, this was dated March sixth, two thousand twenty five.
Who was talking about landscape buffers?
Okay. Oh, yeah. One up. You say your name for the record and?
Yeah, my name's Eric Kepplinger, Kepplinger and Associates.
Oh, before you get started, I'm sorry to interrupt you, I do wanna say for seeker purposes, that the town is declaring lead agency for seeker. This is an unlisted action for commercial area variance and there are no, I don't, I don't, thanks, associated with the, sorry, okay?
Okay, uh, big picture, what's being proposed here are two office buildings, six thousand, or seven thousand thirteen each, uh, there'll be parking around the, uh, behind the buildings and also on the north side of the, uh, eight twelve Franklin Park Drive building. Uh, there'll be one new driveway coming off Franklin Park Drive. Uh, what's being proposed as far as ingress, egress is very similar to, of the, uh, to the, to the five buildings or three buildings that are already there. Uh, with the shared access and, uh, shared parking. So what we're talking about for uh, the variance today is a landscape buffer that would occur along the property line set, the joint eight twelve and eight twenty uh, Franklin Park Drive properties. Uh, the variance requires a, a ten foot wide landscape buffer on each side of that property line. Um, because we're doing a shared parking easement, uh, we, the parking lot would run across that share, uh, that landscape buffer. So we're asking for relief on that buffer.
Without this, you have landscape buffering in the middle of the parking lot?
Yeah, exactly, yes. So what, in the end, it'll be very similar to what occurs along this property and what occurred along the other property to the, um, to the west, uh, and this is, uh, a little, little bit of history, this project was reviewed by the town of Duett Planning Board back in nineteen eighty nine and was, the entire development was approved at that time. And, um, and the use, this use in an R two zone was approved at that time as well.
The use variance. Makes sense, I was wondering about that.
So, that's big picture, that's what we're looking for, relief on the buffer between these two.
And is the relief really just in the, in the parking lot area here, because otherwise?
Well, this is already landscaped.
Right, it's already trees.
And same, this, this here would be already.
You're not removing any trees.
Well, we're moving trees for the development.
Right.
But we're, uh, it will be a lawn or landscape condition.
See, and the variance is just because it goes right through the parking lot. They can't, that's the only, you're the free line.
What they need a variance is though?
Yeah.
So. Now, for some additional, or, yes, for some additional history, uh, the application was submitted last summer to the town of Duett, um, planning board. We've been working with the planning board since that time, we've submitted, uh, a SWIP for the project. Uh, and site plans, we've had a lot of, a lot of dialogue back and forth with the planning board and we, um, we've had the drainage report approved by not only the town of, uh, Duett, planning board engineer, but also Anadaga County, um, highway department.
So one of the criteria is alternatives? Is there an alternative to, is there a way to put landscaping? I can't think of one, but I'm asking, because there's a way to do it.
Um. Well, well, you could, I think for this lot, probably not, because we, we already have a shared access between the two properties. Uh, this here, it would be, um, you could move the property lines and maybe, maybe have, um, this be independent on it, of being connected to the other parking lot, but, um, it would be.
Two parking lots and come in, for either one.
But it would end up being a long dead parking lot.
Is there an entrance on the left side to the street?
And left. This is existing.
There is an entrance that would go past your.
That's a, that's U-turn parking, right?
That would, excuse me?
Like, we think you have parking and enter and exit?
It would come in here.
Yeah, that, that's exactly what's. Or there would be a.
He'd turn around.
Or there would be a line of trees down the middle.
That's right. And it'd be two, basically two lots, you'd go into one lot on the left and go into one lot on the right, and there'd be landscaping down the middle of the lot line.
So, is it fair to say without the variance, it's less safe? Because people would have to turn around and there'd be a lot more traffic.
It would be, yeah, it would, this here would be less, yeah, less safe, it would be.
You would have to go out. What are the actual dimensions of the buffer area that you're talking about?
Well, it's, it would be ten feet wide on each side of the property line, this property line here.
So in total, it's just ten feet?
It's ten feet on each side, so each, uh, each parcel is asking for relief on their side of the property line.
Each parcel needs a ten feet, so it would be a twenty foot line.
Yeah, twenty.
It would be eliminating, have the parking lot on the right, if that is the case.
Or we would adjust the property line.
Well, and if the two parcels were just re-subdivided, you wouldn't need the middle buffer anymore, right?
Um, excuse me?
If the two parcels were re-subdivided.
Well, into one parcel and, um, that could happen, that could happen, but I think in this case, we have, uh, cross access easements for parking.
For whatever reason, you want two taxman parcels, right, but if it was one taxman parcel, you wouldn't need them.
You wouldn't need it, no. No, and that's, uh, Steve has other properties in the town that are like that, that have two buildings and parking of them, parcel.
Any questions from the audience, any, any interested residents? Could you stick your name and address?
John, John Centaur, one one two Stillwater Drive. Um. How big are those buildings compared to the other ones, Ball Park?
About the same size, seven thousand thirteen. Yeah.
And how much of a buffer zone would be left between the property line? Your property line and the residential property line?
Over here?
Yes.
Uh, roughly thirty feet.
And the same with the ones on, from Broadmoor, with the, the back of the yards running up to your parking lot?
Broadmoor's runs on the diagonal.
Yes.
Uh, oh, there's quite a distance over here.
You're talking up there, sir?
Pardon?
Up here?
Well, I can't see you talking.
Well, then, oh, this is.
This is, this is still water.
Still water, yeah.
And Broadmoor, Broadmoor is here.
Broadmoor, and this.
Where's the road?
The road is up here.
Oh, so between Broadmoor and the, under your parking lot, how much room will it be?
Oh, here, there's probably anywhere from thirty to a hundred.
And you're not touching that buffer zone?
We are maintaining as much of the vegetation along the property line as.
But there's a buffer zone along that property line, between this street and where you have to build, just like there was over here.
There is, well, we are maintaining at least, uh, ten feet or more along that property.
Do you guys remember how much, how big the buffer zone was before?
Do I know? Or do?
Yeah, no, I was just curious, I, I just wondered how big the buffer zone was, when you put the other buildings up.
Looking at the map, but I'm not sure if it's on there.
Can I find it on here?
I'll just scroll up to, you're talking about the buildings that are already there?
The buildings that are there now, yeah, there was a buffer zone that was left. This.
You're looking at like this building? This buffer right here?
Buffer, buffer. Buffer on the property line, yeah, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, you have to, time for the landscape buffer.
Yes.
He's saying this case doesn't make any sense, he wants to disrupt his parking lot, he wants to add them, be one part.
No, 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 he's talking about the back.
He's talking about here.
He's talking about the, the other property ones, yes.
And then the bump, thirty feet or something.
Well, the original, um, drawings had, to the property.
Yeah, he's saying, are you gonna keep?
The ones from nineteen eighty.
Well, there was a buffer zone back then. And she says, it looks like about thirty feet, but there was definitely a buffer zone left.
There.
But only ten, ten feet required. Right.
Then, okay.
Ten feet required, my friend.
We are going to maintain as much of the vegetation as we can, because we understand, we're, um, and
Right, yeah, sure.
Steve's a, I mean, he lives in the community, sympathetic, he's, you know, he's trying, he wants to develop the land, but he still wants to be a good neighbor.
So my other concern is that, that whole area is kinda wet. And you're putting two big buildings and a pretty large parking lot, it's what the retention time is, but is that gonna, what else are you gonna do for drainage, to prevent it from not going towards the, the homes?
We, uh, oh, we're building an embankment along this property line here, there's, uh, from a pipe standpoint, there's a pipe that goes from the back of one of the yards here down to the corner, that will be maintained, we're gonna put in a a little, uh, small berm right in this area, so that it captures all of the runoff from our property and it would be held in a stormwater management facility right next to our parking lot. So this has been reviewed by the town engineer and by Anadaga County DOT. The dark dotted line, is that the property lines that you're working on? This is the property line right here, this
goes right through the neighbor yard. Is that correct?
There's a, there's a lot right here.
No, that's the property.
It's that lot.
Property over here. That line hasn't moved, right?
That's all right avoid.
It's awfully close to that house, the property.
After that line, so we have that.
It may not be exact, I mean, I don't.
Well, it's an aerial.
Yeah, it may not be exact.
Are there other questions from the audience?
I was just wondering what, how, can we have your name, please? Susan Kleinberg, I live on Broadmore Lane. Um, what kind of tenants we're gonna be in here and how much traffic this is gonna generate?
Just professional office tenants.
Same, I see one existing like that, who is it?
Um, yeah, maybe some doctors, but maybe just more professional office.
It's gonna, uh, have similar hours to the other office buildings that are there and it will generate similar traffic.
The use variance allows professional and medical use, and that's all that's allowed.
Right.
Yes.
Hi, I'm Nicole O'Gore, I'm at one eighteen Stillwater, so it's like my backyard right there. I'm just wondering, I know you sometimes look at, gonna be a buffer, um, I guess practically, when I'm standing in my backyard, am I gonna be able to see these people in the parking lot, am I gonna be able to watch my son, like, how I mean, how much privacy, I don't know, you know, it's gonna be retained there, because there's quite a bit of brush there and then all.
It's your house here.
Um, one eighteen Stillwater.
And, yeah, it only goes by lot numbers, part of.
Is the, is the one right there?
This one, right here. Yeah, so this buffer, this landscaping here, uh, will be maintained along the property line.
I mean, there's quite a bit of, now, and, like, and again.
Well, we're gonna have to take out vegetation to do some drainage, uh, swales and do the stormwater management facility.
So, well, I'm just saying, like, will I be able to kind of see the people as they're entering the parking, or will they be able to, like, see in my backyard, like, how much buffer are we talking?
Well. How big is the vegetation?
Well, the vegetation's pretty big, but it's probably at the lower stories that you'll be able to see through.
Is there any plan on any sort of, like, dividing wall or fence?
We don't have plans for a fence, we do have a little bit of landscaping on the berm, there's a little berm that's being created along here for stormwater management.
I'm also wondering too, let me, you might know the answer to this question, I recently bought this house, it's a long month ago. So, um, the property values and stuff, do you, I think this is gonna decrease the value of the house I just bought? Like, do you have any idea what this will do to the value of ours?
I have no idea.
Yeah, they, I think it would increase, but if anything, for a building site, but um, I doubt it will decrease at all, I think some cities don't increase much or increase much anyways, but.
I was just looking at a house I sold twenty years ago, and so four times since I sold it. So I don't think the property values will be affected.
Are there any questions?
So when you said that you're gonna have that, uh, split in between.
Your name again, sir?
Paul Carest, I'm at one twenty nine Stillwater, Montmore.
Okay.
Um, that right away that goes between the two buildings, you had to have a green area or something. Why can't you split the two parking lots, I think, uh, one of the other guys was saying something about that, why would you say that would be unsafe? When you're using a parking lot, people back out of parking lot all the time.
But you would come in and you would have to end here and then back out, or there would have to be an area provided for the turnaround, so it, it would create more pavement to make the turnaround.
What's the, what's the distance between the two, uh, parking spots, one on one end and one on the other? You can't, you can't back out, and it's too much to talk about.
But this is just more efficient, this way.
And see why it would be more unsafe. But regardless, okay. My, my biggest concern would be, is the water, you know, at one time I thought that, that they put a drainage area between the houses on Stillwater, this has probably nothing to do with you, maybe not. Between Stillwater Drive and Lionwood, uh, between the houses, they put a drainage area there and people could run their sub pumps into that. And I thought at one time they talked about doing the same thing for the homes in Deacon and behind the yards that end behind Stillwater Drive and Broadmoor. Uh, so we could run my sub pumps, because my, when I run my sub pump, it floods my Lucas's yard and the guy next to me. Um, is that still a possibility to do that, like what they did, uh, between the houses on Stillwater and Lionwood?
We don't have any jurisdiction over any of that, we're just here to deal with this one variance request.
That is, we were, I mean, it's only, we're signing up for, actually. Oh, it's, oh, yeah, it skips houses.
Right now, this, this whole drainage area has not been maintained at all. I mean, we built this building at sixty five, seventy five Purple Road, and this wasn't even taken care of, this was designed, the whole park was designed like that, we didn't design the whole park. We just did that building over there when the foundation was in the ground. So when we clean this thing up, you're gonna get some drainage, you have to dig it out, you can actually have, you know, some water running in, into it, right now it's flat. There's nothing there, so when your water comes out of your basement, it's just gonna go back to your house, the way it is now. That's all just brushing and stuff and it's, it's flat, there's nothing dug out there at all. Again, we didn't do the original park, it should have been done like that, even if it was done like that, it wasn't maintained. So these lots have been sitting there forever and just overgrown and that's.
So, so you're putting a berm there, like, her yard, that's right up to it, at one eighteen, if you're putting a berm there the water, is it, prevent the water from going into her yard?
Yeah, it'll, and then, and then, you know, there'll be also probably a cut in the berm for her water to go into that split.
No, actually, Steve, there's a pipe that goes from back here.
Right.
Near her backyard to this corner, and that's going to be maintained, so.
That never was.
Drainage condition will still exist and we're doing a berm inside the property.
Yeah.
To catch our water. So we're, we're, we wanna maintain the drainage, uh, characteristics of these lots the way it is now, and that drains onto this parcel along the parcel line.
That's not even dug out, and there's a pipe, but that's not even dug out for the.
So we'll clean that up, yeah.
Yes.
Um, my name is Denise, I'm at one twenty one Stillwater, but my mom lives at one twenty, which is the corner house.
Okay.
So I'm just wondering how that will affect her.
We, uh, well, our, in this area, we kept our development back off the, um, property line. So we, uh, knowing that there's some, um, pipes in here and there's, um, grating and, um, grated grating and drainage that ends up going down to the corners, we've maintained that as it's the current condition.
Is there gonna be trees and green space in between, like, the house, like her house, for example, and what's going on?
We have some trees proposed in that area.
These are already taken down on that property that, uh, might be on ours, I don't really know, but they were taken down.
They're following down, she's always worried when there's a storm and one's gonna come through her house.
That's one of the things, when we try to clean this lot, a lot of it's dead in there, and it falls in the road and everything like that, but.
What happened to the person that was building a home there? There was a basement there.
Bought the lot from him, he didn't, no, there wasn't a ba, he never did the basement.
Oh, I thought I saw.
I thought he did too, but he never, yeah, but there were some blocks running across, he never did the basement, got a permit for it, but he never did.
He just put a little driveway in.
Yeah, just. But he never did, and that's when he wanted to sell it or whatever. We did, the only reason why is because we did this building, and we just sold this building.
How big's the retention time? Uh, whereabouts is it?
It's, uh, in this corner here.
It's all open?
Yeah.
Open?
It's a shallow infiltration basin.
The one, it's.
The, it, it should flow, I mean, it's not the.
It'll, it'll, uh, it's designed.
It shouldn't drain.
It's not a pond, it's not designed for standing water.
It's going out to Franklin Park Drive. Yeah, it's not gonna be just like a pond that you see, if you put up a fountain, it's not gonna be like that. Well, that mean, we would be standing water there, it's not, there shouldn't be any standing.
If there is standing water, where do you want it?
Well, if there's a, if there's a plot, plug in the drain or whatever, then, uh, then we'll have to unplug the drain right here.
Okay. So it's shallow?
It's, yeah, it's shallow, and it, it'll have some underdrain fingers that will drain the water completely out of it over within, uh, it'll be seasonal, but most times of the year it should be, uh, dewatered within a couple days.
Did you guys do a perk test in there?
We did.
I'll.
We did three of them. Um, they were, it varied, um, but from twenty minutes to close to an hour.
Any other questions?
Okay, true to approve the, the variance that's requested. I have a second? A second. A motion by number Warback, forbidden area variance of ten feet for a landscape buffer of zero feet, seconded by number Pascal, going to the criteria. Will there be an undesirable change produced in the neighborhood or detriment to their property created by granting the variance?
Uh, it's consistent with the office, but it's, I'm just doing.
Some other method, feasible for the applicant to pursue one of the variants?
We talked about it in the, in.
We talked about it in the recent.
I didn't have to change significantly.
Yeah.
Cancel?
Yeah.
All of the buffer?
Yeah.
Will there be an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood district?
No, you should put something about the, subject to the conditions about the drainage.
And should actually improve is what I heard. Right, change and improve. And I'm correct in saying that there will be buffer remaining between business and the neighborhood residents, I guess? Self-created issue?
Yeah.
All right, that motion by member Warback, permitting an area there is ten feet for landscape buffer of zero feet, seconded by member Pascal, I'll call for a vote, member parents. Uh, member Dela Posta?
Yes.
Member Pascal?
Yes.
Member Warback?
Yes.
Uh, Vice Chair Cornfeld?
Yes.
All right, passes four zero. Second. Public hearing is same issue, it's for eight twenty Franklin Park Drive. Because we still have interest in residents, so I'm gonna read the notice. Notice is here by noon pursuant to section two sixty-seven A of the New York State Town Law. A public hearing will be held by the zoning board of appeals of the town of Duett, New York, town offices, fifty-four hundred Barnum Drive, East Syracuse, New York, on Monday, March seventeen, two thousand twenty-five at six forty-five P M. To consider the application of Stevie Leva Junior and Aliva Management LLC, received by the Duett Town Clerk on January twenty-ninth, two thousand twenty-five. Starting the premises situated at eight twenty Franklin Park Drive, tax map parcel ID zero three nine zero nine zero one three, owned by Aliva Management LLC, and a residential two zoning district. Specific relief requested by the applicant, scenario variance of ten feet for a landscape buffer of zero feet, or Duett Town Code section one ninety-two dash one hundred requires a landscape buffer of at least ten feet. And for such additional relief, as may be necessary or appropriate, posted in the paper, March sixth, two thousand twenty-five. I don't know if you have any supplementary, um, uh, presentation here for this one, but it's true, that is the exact same thing for the other parcel.
Exactly.
Any comments from the audience? Comments from the board? Any comments from your daughter there, member Warback?
I don't have any, can you save up this one?
Any mo, motion from the board? Motion by Joe.
Second.
Second. Second by Nick. Motion made by member Dela Posta to permit narrow variance of ten feet for a landscape buffer of zero feet, seconded by member Pascal. Let's go through the criteria, will there be an undesirable change produced in the character of the neighborhood or detriment to neighborhood properties created by grants and variance?
No, the same reasons as the prior.
Some other method feasible for the applicant to pursue other than a variance, you know, same reasons? Is the requested variance substantial?
Yes.
Be an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood district?
Yeah, same reasons.
And self-created?
Yep.
I also wanna mention that the town is declaring legal agency for purposes of seeker for this application, it's an enlisted action for commercial area variance, and there are no negative or detrimental impacts associated with the action. Um, I've got a motion from member Dela Posta, if we're gonna narrow variance of ten feet for a landscape buffer of zero feet, seconded by member Pascal. Call for a vote, member Dela Posta? Under Pascal?
Yes.
But Warback?
Yes.
Vice Chair Cornfeld?
Yes.
Passes four out, congratulations. It's not an essential, let's move to the other.
It'll probably take, uh, four to six months, but we're gonna do the whole site, you know, I'm wondering if we can do the whole site.
When do you start?
I'm gonna start clearing, uh, some of this.
Okay. Yeah. Oh, okay.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you, thank you all for coming out. And Steve, have a great one.
Thanks. Is that right?
How are we doing a variance for landscape? Had to do, they were gonna need to change their whole parking situation if they didn't get.
No, I know that, but.
Yeah, they should have had the.
Unrelated to this variance, am I wrong?
No, I mean, so they're allowed to ask questions about the project, so they're just.
Yeah.
But like, we do not have jurisdiction over anything.
We decide, we only decide what's in front of us, we, we choose what's in front of us.
So they weren't talking.
But it all gets that same thing.
They weren't watching any board.
Isn't their chance to comment, is their question?
I see.
You're gonna talk to the applicant right away.
Like, they had a lot of questions, but it was, I thought it was just unrelated to the parking.
First, it's all related, they can ask, they can ask the parcels.
This was their opportunity to get in front of them or talk. That's my, I was serious.
No, it's, it's good, no, no dumb questions, um, last but not least, I'm assuming you're here for Farmacan?
I am indeed.
You, you okay with me, uh, uh, reading, leaving the notice?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Can I pull your application up here?
Great.
You need me to change where I'm going here, what do you want me to start?
It's all in one, that they submitted, the whole thing is in first.
Oh, I got you, hard play game, this.
Let's see, advance a little while you, uh, while you find the application matters, that's all right? So I'm Corey Arlach from the Wofford Barkley Damon, here on behalf of Farmacan VeriLife. Uh, if this sounds familiar to you, that is because you, uh, issued a special use permit for this last year. The planning board approved the site plan, uh, as part of the site plan process, we let the planning board know we may be coming back for some additional signage, additional to what was in the original application. Um, this application's before the planning board again, for amendment to the sign, uh, to the site plan, and for the coordinated sign packages to add a twenty-seven point eight square foot sign to the rear of the building. It does have visibility on Bridge Street, but since the sign, since the eighty-one point six square foot sign on the front of the building is also on Bridge Street, we're only permitted one sign per frontage. So since they're both on Bridge Street, we require a variance for that. We're allowed a total of a hundred and twenty square feet of sign base area, we are within, we allow a hundred and twenty feet, which includes ten point six square feet of additional signage on the window. Uh, that says VeriLife East Syracuse on the front, um, so.
We're signs, uh.
Yep, just keep, keep going a little bit, so there you see the sign on the front of the building that's existing, that's not part of what we're asking the variance for, that was approved by the planning board as part of the coordinated sign package. The sign on the back of the building, which is the second one, is the one that we are proposing, twenty-seven point eight square feet. Again, nice visibility on Bridge Street, particularly if people are traveling, they'll understand that that's the, uh, VeriLife dispensary, they can turn right into the building at the entrance. There's also one other plan, which is not part of the variance in any way, uh, might be below this one, which just shows the proposed window film, that's been modified since this initial application. The determination made that the, uh, the welcome to was not, um, within the signage requirement, so now it simply says VeriLife East Syracuse, it's actually a little bit smaller than that. We, uh, modified it with, uh, thanks to the planning department and the planning board, to ten point six square feet, to stay within the hundred and twenty, to avoid asking you all for another variance for that, so, uh, we modified the proposal, stay within the hundred and twenty square feet.
You're on the side with an access drive, right, just from my notes.
There is an access on both sides, actually.
So now you just need a variance for one sign.
Correct, to have a second wall sign with one frontage.
And an access drive, kind of.
Yep.
So that's as you drive, you go over the theory, totally.
Correct.
And it makes sense, because you wouldn't, knowing that street, that's, you wouldn't know unless, particularly that building's in the corner of the.
And as you travel south, that's the way that you enter into the plaza, because it includes, uh, another use there. So if you're driving north, you can see it, but you can't enter in that direction, you'd have to stop at the light, there's a signalized intersection, you could make a left, but it's, that's before you reach the building.
So that's a good diagram, S, S one exists, and S two is the proposal.
Yes, exactly.
That's right, yeah, yes.
Yeah, one page hoping, this is right here. Go on.
Yep.
So often when we've rented s- sign rights in the past, the applicant makes arguments about safety, so I assume you're making similar arguments that this is safer for the public, because there'll be less confusion about where the building is.
Correct.
And then be able to turn in, just by one notice about.
That's correct. For anyone traveling south, they would not know they've reached us until they passed it, uh, because the signage is on the other side of the limit, just like.
And it's a new building, it's a new total use in the town of Duett, so.
Correct. We will be back before the planning board, uh, later this month, and we've already been to the county planning board, who had no position on the regulations.
It's up there.
Correct. I don't more than believe is okay with this, it'll be sitting here.
Planning board recommended approval of the variance, we were there last month.
So the, the, um, business has been, it's already open?
Yeah.
So have they noticed problems, that people not being able to find it?
Um, I have, I don't have any specific report of that, um, so I would, I could not stand here and tell you specifically that customers complained of it, I think, um. Logically, it was identified before we got the approval from the planning board that there, this was going to be an issue. We let the planning board know at that time, we may be coming back for additional signage, but there was such a sprint to get the dispensary approved, that we didn't wanna also have to come back to the zoning board to feel that that bad. So, um, it wasn't like a bait and switch, we were very upfront with them, that we may be coming back for additional signage at the time, um, so. If, maybe if I was better prepared, I could have got some details as to whether any customers specifically complained, but I don't, I don't know, I apologize.
Well, you can't, it's like Doitt doesn't mark, right, you can't.
Yes.
If you'd heard about it, you'd, you would have told us.
Yes, I would, can't be too prepared.
It's impossible. Any other questions?
More motions?
I move to approve those areas.
I have a motion from member Warback, any seconds? Second, second, maybe. Okay, let's go through the criteria, will there be an undesirable change produced in the character of the neighborhood or detriment to neighborhood properties created by grants and this variance?
No, it's consistent with other buildings in the area, and it's within a hundred and twenty square feet.
Some other method feasible for the applicant to pursue other than a variance here?
No.
Only way to know. Requested variance substantial?
Yes.
One additional sign?
Yes.
Will there be an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood district?
No, could assist with customer's finding location and make it safer.
Self-created?
Yeah.
I've got a motion by member Warback to permit narrow variance for one additional attached sign for a total of two attached signs on a street beside with an access drive, what side of the building is it?
North.
It is the north elevation. A motion by member Warback to permit narrow variance for one additional attached sign for a total of two attached signs on a street beside with an access drive, seconded by member Pascal. I'll call for a vote, member Dela Posta? Member Pascal?
Yes.
Uh, member Warback?
Yes.
Uh, Vice Chair Cornfeld?
Yes.
Congratulations, Corey, thank you for your time. Thank you, have a great night. Motion to adjourn? Who wants it? No, we're not here to do it.
Nancy first, second, five, Joe.
I just killed two minutes, I'm fifteen, seven seventeen.
Whoops. Right, I don't know, you did it. Great work.
Hey, thanks for coming tonight, I'm so quiet, I can't hear. And I love apples too, I have five on the day. Gotta say, help me, I have apples a day. Doctor, what? At least five apples a day. Which, which has been season?
Oh, ready to go, babe?
Six more months.
I eat five, I always have many fruits and vegetables, that's fair of us, Lee.
Bye.
Thank you.
Was the end of song?
So, uh, this is at, uh, Hotel Syracuse?